Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council study session for Monday, December thirteenth, two thousand and one. We have residents that can virtually attend our city council meetings by watching them live on the city's YouTube channel. And you certainly can dial in at one, two, five, three, two, one, five, eight, seven, eight, two, and enter the meeting ID number, eight, six, eight, seven, two, six, three, two, three, seven, three. So Madam Clerk, it indicates in the script that you're going to call the meeting to work and we'll have a swearing in ceremony. And it looks as if we've got Municipal Court Judge Lisa Mansfield, who will conduct the oath of office for our own Patty Bell. So Judge Mansfield, if you're available.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hello.
Are we ready to proceed?
We are ready. If Miss Bell is ready.
I'll have you raise your right hand.
I'm gonna raise my left thing.
Okay.
My right is hanging out right here, but I'm there.
On the right of my image.
There you go.
Well, first of all, I'll introduce myself. My name is Judge Lisa Mansfield, and I preside over Lakewood Municipal Court, which also serves the cities of DuPont and Stilltown. I also preside proudly over our Veterans Court, and I'm very pleased and happy to swear in Patty Bell as a council member for Lakewood. So Patty Bell, if you would repeat after me, please. I, Patty Bell.
I, Patty Bell.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws of the city of Lakewood.
And the laws of the city of Lakewood.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability.
Truly, faithfully, diligently, and impartially.
Truly, faithfully, diligently, and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of council member.
Perform the duties of the office of council member.
In and for the city of Lakewood and Pierce County, Washington.
In and for the city of Lakewood and Pierce County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
Yay, I'm gonna take a picture, Patty.
With my other hand.
Everybody smile. Even you, Mr. Caulfield, I know it's difficult. Judge Mansfield, thank you so much for being such a great part of our team here in Lakewood and for swearing in Patty Bell, one of our new but esteemed council members. So Patty, thank you for standing up for election and for serving with us. And the floor is yours. If you'd like to say a few words, we welcome you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you Judge Mansfield for this. I really appreciate it, and I look forward to serving my term and learning from all of you on council and all of the city staff. So I'm very excited for this opportunity, and I think it is a great privilege and honor to serve the city of Lakewood. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you again, Judge Mansfield. One of these days, we'll have you back to chat with us a little bit more about Veterans Court and all things municipal court. We'd love to hear more and get educated as we head into twenty twenty-two.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Take care. Next, we have our study session agenda, and as indicated on our list for tonight's events, our items for discussion include the review of the third quarter two thousand and twenty-one financial report. And for this, we have our deputy city manager, Todd Kraus.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. This third quarter financial report incorporates the mid-biennium budget adjustment as well as the ARPA budget adjustment as approved by the city council on November fifteenth, which includes incorporating ordinance seven sixty-four, which establishes an Economic Development Opportunity Fund within the general fund ending fund balance for the purpose of accumulating funds, excess funds from the general fund, and other funds that are eligible to provide funding for economic development-related expenditures. The set amount, side amount, as approved in the mid-biennium budget adjustment, is one million in two thousand and twenty-one and another million in two thousand and twenty-two for a total of two million dollars. The funds have not yet been appropriated by the city council for any specific purpose, so will remain in ending fund balance reserves until the city council authorizes the specific expenditures. I've also added a section for the ARPA financials. The ARPA funds programs are listed by the various categories, such as category two for the negative economic impacts, category three for services to disproportionately impacted communities, the revenue replacement category, and indirect administrative costs. The total authorized budget as approved via ordinance seven fifty-nine is four million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand and four million, one hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and nineteen, of which just over twenty-five thousand has been spent through third quarter for indirect administrative costs. A summary of our general and street fund ending fund balance year-to-date, there is twenty point eight million dollars in ending fund balance that includes the five million dollars that is required to maintain the twelve percent ending fund balance reserves. I've also set aside the one million dollars for Economic Development Opportunity Fund in two thousand and twenty-one, which then leaves fourteen point eight million dollars reserved for future budgets through two thousand and twenty-four. And I will say that the ending fund balance during this quarter is the highest it has been since two thousand and seven. The general and street fund ending fund balance compared to year-to-date two thousand and twenty is up by three point nine million or thirteen percent. And compared to year-to-date budget, it's up by three point six million or eleven percent. Most of the revenues are up. Sales tax is up by two million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand compared to two thousand and twenty. Gambling tax is up by one million, four hundred and seventeen thousand. Camera infractions is up by two hundred and thirteen thousand. Property tax, as we expected, is up by two hundred and sixty-six thousand. Criminal justice sales tax up by a hundred and eighty thousand, which is in line with park sales tax, which is up by ninety-eight thousand. Franchise fees are up currently by eighty-nine thousand. Development services permits and fees in total is up by forty-one thousand. Admissions tax up by thirty-nine thousand. Parks and recreation fees is up by thirty-five thousand. State shared revenues in the general and street fund is up by nineteen thousand. Fuel tax makes up fifty-eight thousand of the increase. Liquor up twenty-nine thousand, and high crime is down by seventy-three thousand. Utility tax is up by seventeen thousand, but that also does include seventy-three thousand from an audit of a phone provider for the periods of May two thousand and twelve through December two thousand and twenty.
Hey, Todd, is there a recap page you can direct us to because we all likely read the first almost two hundred pages of financial materials, but it would be good to kind of direct our attention to the recap you're.
Sure, the recap page is on page four. And that is the general and street fund recap.
Got it. And then we can follow along with you since it's not on the screen here.
Yeah. On the areas that are down, police extra duty contracts are down by two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And I'm looking at the expenditure side or revenue side, I'm sorry. Intergovernmental revenue is down by a hundred and eighty-five thousand, and that's primarily in court contracts. Fines and forfeitures from municipal court is down by ninety-seven thousand, and miscellaneous is down by sixty thousand, of which the majority of that is in interest earnings. Overall, expenditures increased by four hundred and sixty-two thousand or less than two percent. On a cost recovery basis, and this is on page thirty-nine, of the packet, development services policy target is eighty-five percent. A year-to-date is ninety-seven percent, but if you look at the average when the city council adopted this recovery ratio or percentage, the average is eighty-eight percent between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty. On page sixty-four is the parks cost recovery. The policy target is forty-five percent. On a year-to-date basis, it's fifty-two percent, and the average is forty-five percent between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty. The next section I'm going to cover is on page sixty-nine or starts on page sixty-nine, which is the real estate excise tax. And with the mid-biennium budget adjustment, we increased the annual estimate from one point eight million to three point five million. And that compared to September two thousand and twenty is up by one million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And when we compare it to the budget, it's up by six hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So city manager included the figures through November in his city manager's weekly update. And through November, we've collected four million, one hundred and eighty thousand compared to the three point five million that we were expecting at the time. So collections so far have exceeded by six hundred and eighty thousand. So this really means there's a lot more that can be spent on capital projects. And then lastly, is related to the capital projects, and this is the transportation benefit district. I've included a future action by the city council in the update, and once the city council approves the ordinance and such, that section will include an updated list of projects. So collections through November, we've already collected eighty, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand compared to the annual budget of eight hundred and thirty-five thousand. And typically, revenues come in at about sixty, fifty to sixty thousand dollars. So we will definitely meet the annual estimate. So that concludes my presentation.
That's it?
That's it. That's the, that's the quick summary.
Yeah. Well, before I turn it over to the council members for questions, going through the recap here through the third quarter, any surprises on the positive side or any concerns on the concern side? As you look with your crystal ball into the future.
I'm, I would say I'm pleased with what we're seeing on the revenue side. I think that we still need to have some caution because as what we're seeing, and I think we're all seeing it in the stores online, there is some issues with supply chain, and so how that will correct itself in two thousand and twenty-two or later, I think we still need to be cautious. On the expenditure side, I'm feeling good about the expenditures. All the department directors are being very conscientious and spending where they need to spend, but also recognizing areas where they need to spend that they will spend if it's necessary. So we're holding back where we can, approaching still with caution, but also, for example, you know, we had not budgeted for training. Well, as things got a little better and with the revenues coming in, there are some training that is needed, and departments are taking advantage, advantage of that.
Right. In my next question to lead a discussion, and again, I'll turn it over to council, the latter part of your presentation had various performance measures for the various departments. And I don't know if we want to get into any of those, but a couple of them were curious to me. For example, in police, even though this is not your bailiwick, but I was curious to see the number of traffic stops. We had a target of nine thousand, and we're woefully below the target. So do you know if there's internal review of these targets vis-à-vis actuals, or what is your role with the departments in reviewing the performance measures against the standard targets?
So this is an item that we looked at as part of our executive leadership team meeting, and so we went through and looked at the performance measures, and that's one of the questions that the city manager had. He was looking at these different performance measures and taking a look at the target and had asked us all to take a look at the target, and is that reasonable? And so that is something that we'll evaluate for the year-end report. He's also asked us to take a look at the past year's performance measures to see how they line up as well. So it's in the works, especially now that we have filled with the position with Michael Vargas. So he's also looking at these performance measures as well. And actually, there is a discussion amongst the ELT to talk about performance measures and the work plan. So as part of the whole strategic plan follow-up.
That would be great, especially on permits and permit types, but we don't need to get into the details of that tonight necessarily. Council members, any other questions for Ms. Kraus?
Yeah, I got.
Mr. Boki.
Todd, thank you for the presentation. Can you, you gave us a lot of information on sales tax, and clearly, that's very important and is doing pretty well. Can you kind of give us a a kind of a summation of where the strengths are and where are we? Are we too dependent on anything, or is anything not gonna last, or are we, are we just the winds that are back right now, or are any odd things happening?
I think the good news for us is we're not entirely dependent on any specific area. So a good example is on motor vehicle sales. We're not heavily dependent on that. So the supply chain issues that we're having were, if you drive around, there's just not a whole lot of vehicles. So I kind of feel sorry for these car dealerships, but we're not completely dependent on any area, as you can see, and I'm looking at page seven. Our sales tax by sector, we've broken it out by retail trade compared to two thousand and twenty. We're up by nine hundred and ninety-one thousand. We've got a good area in services that is up by four hundred and twenty-four thousand. Half of that is, which is in food services and drinking places. So people are still enjoying the conveniences and such. And we are seeing on construction, there's been an increase of four hundred and forty-four thousand. Wholesale trade, that's even up by seventy-four thousand, and that's not really an area we really pick it apart. And it's not as much, and we don't have a whole lot of detail in that area. But just basically overall, everything is up, and I'm, I'm not specifically concerned about any of the different categories. I think we have a diverse sales tax base.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yes, Deputy Mayor. Ms. Kraus, I had a question on, on page twelve of your presentation, which is fourteen of our packet, is the discussion on the criminal justice sales tax. And it does include some definition about what the sales tax might be used for. But it doesn't really say what we use it for. Out of those options, I'm not sure that we use it for everything on that list. So what's our primary use of that revenue?
So primarily, the criminal justice sales tax is applied to police. So on a police budget that is about twenty-five million, and we're taking in about one point two million, we don't have to specifically define what it is that we're spending it on, that we have enough in our police department's criminal justice budget that it can be applied to that.
Okay, that, well, okay, I see. So, you know, it, it just mixes with all the general fund money to fund the public safety and the police department.
Yes.
Okay. And then I was looking at other public safety on page twenty-six of your presentation, which is twenty-eight of our packet. And this had to do with the public safety grants. And the one that stands out is the one for the plevotomy mobile unit. We a number of years ago, when we were sort of the lead department in the region in terms of having the capability within our police department of, of being able to do plevotomy activities in support of various enforcement situations like drunk driving and, and others. And then here it seems on this that we budgeted twenty thousand dollars for the plevotomy mobile unit, and we haven't spent it. So i- is that because we weren't awarded the grant in the end, or what does this, that indicate about the status of our plevotomy services efforts in the police department?
Okay, um, so just give me one second to pull up the, the budget adjustment and that you previously approved.
Mr. Branstadter, you're talking about the hundred and forty-eight dollars?
So for the Washington State Patrol Plevotomy Mobile Unit, the items that you're seeing here are grants for the most part that have been approved. Now whether they're, so some of the grants are not on an annual calendar year. And they will have a time period for when they must be used by, and sometimes they allow for crossover of years. I don't have the specifics on this one. It wasn't something that the city council had just approved in the last mid-biennium. So I would have to get some additional, and we can provide that in the next report, or if you give me just one moment, I can pull up the last one that we did. The one that was previous to that, and let me just see if I can find it.
Okay. And again, my concern is that this is not an indication that we have ceased providing that or using that tool in terms of plevotomy services by police officers.
So council member Branstadter, this is one that I will have to follow up on.
Okay, that, that, yeah, thank you to do that. I, I did have a question on page fifty-four of your presentation. And I'm gonna have to look at page fifty-four to remember why I charted that down. This is the page about, that has a summary of section one oh eight loans. And the my question has to do with the last remark at the bottom of the page. It it says, it talked about a loan for curbside motors and for the Living Access Support Alliance. And it looked like those loans are are included in the chart up above, but the comment says the outstanding combined principal balance as of September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one is being repaid by a third party. And therefore is not recognizable as debt in the city's long-term debt set, or city's financial. Who is the third party that's repaying those loans? Is that referring to Lhasa and Curbside Motors, or is there a secret sand out there that's repaying these loans?
So I have to tell you the reason why we even put this in this report. It has to do with a lot of technical details, and there was also a lot of research that was done as part of our audit. And I wanted this called out specifically for the future. If I'm not here or anybody here in finance, why there is a discrepancy on our schedule for debt service, which is debt that the city owes on our general obligation bonds or any other type of debt. So my purpose here is it is truly a third party, and I can't remember. I'm sorry, hold on.
Those entities are the third party.
Yeah, so they're not, the city isn't paying them, so that's not our financial obligation. And when we went through the audit, there was a big discussion on what it is that we include in our debt service schedules for really exciting annual financial reporting purposes, but I didn't want to lose sight of this. Should somebody pull up our annual financial statements and wonder why we didn't put this in, but I don't remember all of the details. I just know that for these two, based on the nature of their loans, they are not the city's, and we don't report them on our debt service schedules.
So when someone makes payments on them, they're not making the payments to the city? I mean, these are loans that we have made that when people are repaying them, they're, it looks like they would be sending checks to the city. And, 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 and the comment sounds like maybe they're, are they repaying it to someone else? I, I don't know, because I see the two loans in the chart with loan balances.
Aren't we the fiscal agent on that? We're not the, the payee.
So, so in terms of who, so the city does all of the record keeping for this. So the payments would have to come to the city because we're tracking them. So here, when you're seeing the first payments, all of this, this level of detail that is all flowing through the city's books. But now, if you told, if I had to say, like, is it going through a bank, then goes to us? Were they making a payment directly to us? Or is it just making a payment directly to a bank account that we have? I don't have that level of detail.
So these section one oh eight loans as, as, as repayment comes in, we're just passing it through to someone else. It's not going into any sort of city fund that we can, would, would be able to re-use in the future. It's not a revolving load fund?
You know, council member, let me, let me get back to you on that one. So basically, what we're doing is we're paying back monies that we took out in advance, and that's why they call it a section one oh eight. So we're borrowing against monies that we normally would have received. We're just getting in advance of it and applying it to these projects, which means we don't get the money for future projects because we've already used that money. But.
I, I, I think that maybe sometime I will make, get a chance to perhaps talk with you and the city manager to clear up my own fog. Okay.
Look at the top comment on that page, Mr. Branstadter. If you look at, it might help. The, the top paragraph on that page, fifty-six of our packet. The second paragraph, it's.
Yeah, I'm. And, and I guess I, I will, I'll not take up any more time this evening trying to understand the, the relationship between the chart and the comment to move forward. I think my, my last question, Ms. Kraus, is, is that when we, we talked about the cost recovery, and particularly the last two years of cost recovery in the community development and public works of these, and when we, you know, a number of years ago, when we set some targets, we wanted to reach an annual cost recovery of eighty-five percent by two thousand and twenty-one. And we have more than done that. I mean, we're, we're over a hundred percent last year and ninety-nine percent so far this year to be able to go and do that. But, you know, the eighty-five percent was a a number that we came at and that we said, you know, the, these fees have value to the person getting the permit, but that they also have value to the public. And so that we were going to use, we wanted to make sure that we were using some public funding to pay for part of the cost of doing these. So now that we've sort of very clearly made to the point of where we'll have for two successive years, just met and significantly exceeded the eighty-five percent, how does that play into the next? How does that play into the next, um, as we look forward 12 months from now? And if we still see that we're at that about 100% cost recovery. How does that play into calculating downward revisions? In the fee schedule to, again, approach to get towards 85 as a as a as a target? How how does that process? Do you envision that working?
So that would work just like we do the fee schedule like we did this year. Um, it'll just go into a further extensive process as we go through the 2023 and 24 budget. So we will be starting that in about June of this next year, June 2022. We'll start thinking about that, and I'm pretty sure city manager will have some direction and that will include the cost recoveries. But right now, we're just looking at it over a period of time. I think we're just kind of in a unique situation. And yes, while I agree that our. Uh, cost recovery has been higher than the 85%. I'm not sure if we're always going to be at 85%.
Okay, thank you. And I I guess I just I just said, wanted to make one final comment regarding the deputy mayor's. Observations regarding the performance measures for the various departments of being able to do that. Yeah, and some are being met, some are being uh exceeded, and others are not being approached. And you you did indicate that those things were were under review, and I would just. Want to. Say that I I I wouldn't necessarily solely want to have adjust the performance measures based on performance. That we can adjust a performance measure to match what our performance is. But the 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 performance measure should really be what we want the performance to be, not adjusted to make it so that it, we have a performance measure that we're meeting. To be able to go and do that. So just be, you know, some performance measures that we're not meeting maybe need action other than changing the performance measure. Yeah, and others. Maybe so, maybe maybe the performance measure was unrealistic. All right, thank thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
I'm actually glad that you brought that up, council member Branstadder, because I didn't really finish what I started on the performance measures. And in our discussion at the executive leadership team, there is a a a big piece of the performance measures that is missing. So I agree with you that we're not just going to adjust our performance measures. And the performance measures target should really be what the target was intended to be. How our actuals come in, really, the piece that is missing is benchmarking with other like organizations. And also an explanation of why we have not met the target or exceeded the target. So we're not completely 100% there on the performance measures. We need the explanations, we need to set the standard and the explanations of why things are out of whack or not quite reaching target. And we could still have the target at being a certain level without actually attaining it in the next certain year. But what are we going to do in order to attain that level if that is the level that we're desiring?
Anything else, Mr. Branstadder?
No, thank you, Miss, I'm fine.
Any other questions of Ms. Kraus by members of the council on the third quarter financial report? Going once, going twice? Todd, you made an incredible presentation, so you you dazzled them. And we can move to the next item. Thank you again for all your work and for the work of the folks in your department. 2021 has been a a good year, and thank you for your stewardship and showing us the great transparency of the numbers for the the public's. Public's good. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we turn to a review of a memorandum of understanding with the Rotary Club of Lakewood related to the Fort Silicon Park Pavilion. And for this, we have our Parks, Recreation and Community Services Director, Mary Dodsworth.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Wayland and City Council Members. Um, I'd like to share with you tonight. Uh, proposed MOU between the city of Lakewood and the Rotary Club of Lakewood. Um, as you may know, the city started working with the Rotary Club of Lakewood in 2016, talking about the idea of creating some kind of a gathering space, community, um, presentation, performance area. Um, acre for the arts. It it went by lots of different names, but, um, in the end, we were able to build a beautiful pavilion building at Fort Silicon Park. Many of you have tended concerts in the park and other kinds of events there. So during the process, we had several MOUs with the Rotary Club of Lakewood talking about contributions and, um, how they may interact with us throughout the process. Uh, all during the entire period of time, um, we talked about when it's all said and done and built and ready to go. What kind of benefit might the Rotary Club of Lakewood receive for their effort, their contributions and their community support? So, uh, the building's been, um, completed and we've made some tenant improvements and we've had some issues and events. Um, probably not to the level we initially anticipated. COVID did put a little bit of a damper on our gathering, but, uh, we're getting back on track with that. Um, so the MOU number three really outlines the, um, consistent conversations that we had with them since the very beginning. And although the players have changed, because during this period of time, quite a period of time has passed. We've had, they've had different, um, presidents and different, um, boards. But, um, the conversation's been very consistent, and the Rotary Club of Lakewood has reviewed this and they're in agreement with. The, um, MOU as it stands now. So it was in your packet and and basically it talks about. Um, their use of the having use of the pavilion for their Rotary Club type activities. So the idea would they would have, um, basically a day and a half. Um, one day would be a half day where they would be able to do, um, uh, Rotary Club meeting, have a lunch meeting out there. They've talked about that. Um, sometime that was convenient. And then the other idea is having a one-day activity or event. Could be a weekend, could be another type of a day, but they would have an activity that they would want to do. It could be, um, a concert in the park. It could be some kind of a show trade show or activity. They would get to decide that. So, um, the MOU talks about them having, um, a half day, a Monday through Friday for a club gathering as well as a full day. Um, could be a weekend, could be a regular day. The idea is is that the, um, the, um. Contribution would be the, um. Special use permit. If they wanted to do something, say, in the evening, or it was a kind of event that needed extra resources, then the club would then pay for those extra resources, just like anybody doing a special use permit. Say it was going to be an event that brought in a whole bunch of people and they needed extra sanitation or garbage or security or something like that fencing. So anything outside of the normal use would be on, um, at the expense of the club. And again, like all of the activities that we do at the park, we, um, clearly review all activities. We look at risk management, impact to the site, impact to, um, people utilizing the facility that aren't at the event as well as the in the event itself. So, um, I did include a draft MOU in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dodsworth. Any questions? Council? Mary, have we had much use of the pavilion this last year, 2021?
Besides city activities and events, like the summer concerts, we've done training events and activities. We did have two different church groups that utilized it for services, uh, primarily in the summer because they wanted, you know, the sit- the facility itself holds about 70 to 80 people, depending on the kind of setup that you have. But when you open the doors and you're utilizing the outdoors, you can use a whole lot, you can have more. So, um, that's really the the main use. We haven't really been promoting it because of COVID and the restrictions and the guidelines changing. So, um, we see that happening more and more. And what we'll do is, um, be staffing up because we do require facility attendance and things like that at the site while it's going on. Uh, custodial support following an event, uh, so that we can make sure that that investment's being, um, taken care of.
Great. So, uh, council member Moss and then council member Branstadder.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I was just curious, have the Rotary Club used it at all as the day that they request?
Uh, they haven't, but they did contact us a month or two ago and asked about doing a Friday night activity in December. And that's when we recognized that we really never closed the loop on this MOU. Um, and so it was a whole new group of people and they just heard through the grapevine that they had access to the facility. So that's and and we would honor that. We would work with them because of this really relationship. It ended up changing. They didn't end up doing the activity that they had initially planned to do. So no, the 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 chart answer is no, they haven't. But I think that they, uh, once this gets, um, secured, uh, they'll be starting to take a look at how they might utilize this benefit in following years.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Branstadder?
Good times here. Ms. Dodsworth, uh, I was looking at the section three where it says, city specifically reserved the following authority. And the, uh, the first one there speaks to naming rights and references, uh, our resolution, uh. I wasn't quite sure the citation there, 2016 dash 2018. Doesn't look like an actual resolution number. To us, but is it, is that referring to the naming rights that, uh, policy that the council adopted? Uh, with respect to all city, uh. Things over there?
Yes, yes. And we'll double check the numbering on that resolution. But yes, it's referring to the naming rights that we just went through that process not long ago regarding someone's interest. And the reason that that's in there is that throughout the process, the facility was called various things. And so there was some idea that it might be called something different than, um, the city of Lakewood Pavilion in the park. And so they just to note that if there was an intent to change the name of it, say, to the Rotary Stage or to something, something else, that, um, it would need to go through that process and approve by council.
Okay, I I I would guess that, you know, you could, and we can check the number in sight with the actual resolution was. But, uh, also some wording that. I think that there's some intent on part of council to look at amending that process. Here in the short term, so maybe referring to a process. That's maybe in in effect, but that or as changed by future actions to to be able to go and do that. Just so that that we don't. Vest an old process in this facility, um, to be able to go and do that. And, uh. This is replacing a memorandum that expired?
It didn't expire. It was just, uh, well, we'll have to double check on the expiration. But it was just intended to be MOU number three, once the facility was completed. Uh, we had the first MOU was really talking about, is this a good idea? Do we want to move forward? MOU number two was, how much are you going to contribute? How much is the city going to contribute? And what are we going to do, uh, to build this facility? With the idea that MOU number three was going to be specifically for, um. Any future benefit of use or management or other kinds of, uh, responsibilities.
Okay, I I I was just w- wondering to make sure that it wasn't intended for this memorandum of understanding to be retroactive to some previous date. Because in the beginning, it talks speaks to about a inserting a date in in, uh, 2020. And is that just a scribbler? Format, uh, item from an old memorandum. Uh, up on the top to be able to that, but it's going to be effective when when we all sign it. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to answer one of the questions from the previous conversation. Resolution number 2016 dash 18 is naming or renaming city parks emphasis. And it was, uh, action was taken on it on October 3rd of 2016. So it's a scribner's error. We would take out the 20 in front of the 18 in that line of the contract, and it would stand corrected, and it would represent the relevant, uh, resolution.
With a comma that says, as may be amended from time to time, or as may be amended.
Yeah, you you certainly would want to put that in there so that you weren't having to return with great frequency. That's correct.
Yep. So if Ms. Dodsworth can take care of that, that would be great. Any other questions from council on this particular item or issue? Uh, Ms. Dodsworth, was there any other much negotiation for the number of days? I'm surprised that they only bargained for a day and a half.
Well, there was conversation regarding lots of different things, and that was the time and date that they felt would be consistent and usable for the amount of activity that that the, um, that the club needed. So they can rent it for as many days as they like after that.
Great. I'm sure the incoming president of Lakewood Rotary will have good use for it in 2022, so.
We'd love to work with them on on, uh, creating a wonderful event for the community.
Very good. I'll be in touch, because I'll be the.
Good to know.
All right. If there are no further questions of council on this item, we will turn to, uh, item number three, our special events and public art update from our Parks and Recreation Coordinator, Sally Martinez. Thank you, Mary.
Hello, Deputy Mayor Wayland and City Council Members. This is my favorite presentation of the year, uh, looking back over 2021 at all the events that we, as a team, put on uh, for the community with the purpose of uniting them together, creating fond memories. And regardless of the COVID restrictions, bringing people together. And it's so nice to be able to look back, have a nice PowerPoint for you to look at. Um, look back without the work involved, uh, without the stress of who's going to come and who's not going to come and just see the smiling faces, um, and the great job that the city did, uh, using our resources to put on these events that are relevant to the audience. So, uh, I always like to start out just by reminding, uh, the city council that we do put the audience first. And when we're devising these events, we always, um, gonna revisit that. What at this moment in time is important to the Lakewood community, to the people of Lakewood? Um, that changes. And, um. So we keep that in mind. And then secondly, we work very, very, very hard to make sure that all the events are accessible to everyone. So that means it's accessible to people of all ages, all ability, all cultures and all income levels. So we want our events to ideally be free to the public. But at the same time, have a really strong return on our investment. So we we always keep that 45% ROI in mind. It was great to hear Todd say that we were at 53% this year. So we work hard on sponsorships and we work hard on grants. So I'm going to start a PowerPoint so that we can go through all the highlights. Then I'm going to touch on, um, our outline for 2022 events and then where we are with our signal box wrap, so you can see that. The theme this year really was unity, and we wanted to, I just wanted to reflect on that. We've had our 25th anniversary and the team to get came together with the tagline, uh, building community and really emphasizing unity. And we were excited to just have that theme. We knew that every event we put on throughout the year would have that theme. We're excited to see the different ways we could tie into that theme. So in January, you know, the 25th anniversary, it it was there and it was COVID. And we knew we had to be nimble and think outside the box and be flexible like we were in 2020. And the idea of a digital art contest came to mind because people could still do it of all ages. And so. No sooner had we kind of thought of that idea than Twin Star Credit Union came forward and said they would sponsor the cash prizes. And then we knew it was a go, and everything happened so quickly. Um, I called Connie Coleman with. Um, I called Connie Coleman with Lakewood Sister Cities Association and she pulled in Kim Hay. Um, and we came up with two themes with the Arts Commission and those themes were Love Lakewood and Unity. Uh, so I just spoke a little bit about the audience and always wanting keeping, keeping a strong pulse on the audience. So I just have a very quick video of the winners from Lakewood and from Gim Hay. But I wanted to give you enough time just to peruse and read what they wrote because it really does give you an insight unto who our audiences and what they're thinking, what Lakewood means to them, what unity means to them and what Love Lakewood means. Um, so before I go into the next slide, I just wanted to, uh, talk about some words that really stuck out that we then uh, carried through the rest of our events, which were, uh, coming together, uniting all cultures and people of diverse backgrounds, bonding, friendship. Um, with unity, nothing can bring us down and the basic need to connect. So we're in a fortunate position in Parks and Rec to be able to bring people together to connect. And the art was, um, put together in this book and it was put out on social media as a flip book. Uh, so that, that is how we worked around the, uh, virus. And then in January, we had our Mark Luther King event. And the theme was an injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Uh, we have a wonderful committee that works on this and it truly was our first virtual event. And, uh, we had a, an amazing videographer, Sylvie Johnson, who's on our arts mission. And she, um, filmed inspirational messages from youth and from our community leaders. And we had a keynote speaker who did a wonderful job. The video is about 30 minutes and it was put out on social media. We then moved into our 25th anniversary in-person event during the summer. Um, it was such a success. We had so many partners there. We had sponsors. And most importantly, we were in person. We got to use the beautiful Colonial Plaza, um, which just always shines for these events. We explored with the two stages. Um, LMCC and was able to get the jazz band going. We had another band on the main stage. We had vendors, food trucks and then, uh, international entertainment. Our farmer's market saw an extended season, uh, because of COVID. I wanted to elongate that. It is considered an essential service, though, um, it can happen regardless of the situation with COVID. It's the longest farmer's market we've had. And we changed the, well, actually we stuck with Fridays, which was what we did last year at Port Silicon Park. Actually it was Thursday, sorry. And then we moved it to Friday. Um, so here we go. Uh, it was the opening day, saw a 51% increase over last year's opening day, which in itself was phenomenal. Um, but the vendors were thrilled, the people were thrilled. They, they came out in full force. Um, and so of course, what you'll find at the market are our seven farmers. You have to have five to be officially a farmer's market. Our flower farms, um, 24 food vendors, 19 crafters and 12 food trucks, which is more than we've ever had. I wasn't sure how that would work because you either, um, you have too many and then none of them make a profit and they all leave. Or you have big long lines, um, but it proved to really bring more people out, uh, because again, they couldn't eat in so many restaurants. So they could come out and have a picnic and stay for the day. I'm Sally Martinez. I've been working for the City of Lakewood and Parks and Recreation for six years now. So the market starts at two o'clock and my day starts with the volunteers and interns and staff. The whole team comes out at 10 o'clock and we start the day by setting up our tents. At 11 o'clock, the vendors start trickling in. And the wonderful thing about our market is the vendors have become like a family. And so there's, they love each other. They're so nice to each other. And we're right in the middle of the day right now. All the vendors are set up, going strong. The community has come out in full force to support them. So people have brought their whole families. They've brought their dogs and they're having a great time.
My duties here at the market is I get here early. I hope the vendors get all packed in where they need to go. When you work the market for a couple of years, you get to know everybody and it's just so fun to talk to everybody.
Okay. So I got here around 3:15. I asked people with kids if they want a healthy buck. So I asked them if they want that. Um, most of the time they say yes. Um, I also asked them if they want flyers for the upcoming event here in Lakewood. If they want, um, magnets and, um, the tote bag. I'm having a good time. I've met some people, made some friends. One of my goals is to meet people and make friends. So yeah. But my mom gave me $20 that I, uh, I, I look forward to going around and using it. Um, maybe ice cream, pie?
So the biggest challenge probably this year at the market was some of those hot days. Um, but we worked through them. We had one day that we canceled. And the next time it happened, we just moved to the grass and that turned out to be, uh, worked out very well. So, um, I'm going to go back one. So we have new food trucks. The ones I brought in are, um, hot dogs, pizza, us, uh, bubble tea, which is, is so popular. Um, and some of our new crafters were, um, Hojo Clay Arts, Burn Bright Candles, Craft Theory. So you know, um, what were, was highlighted just a, a few weeks ago, um, as a new business in Lakewood. Um, we had a new soap studio, uh, Pixies potions, have bath products. One sharp guy came out and sharpened people's knives. Um, and jollab leather, really high quality products. Studio Kit designs, beautiful, uh, cutting boards. And, uh, just really elevated, uh, the market with their products and the bath house against the candles. Body products. Um, we had some artists. We had body scrubs. We had, um, Yolanda and I went to school together and she has yo-yos dolls. We went to school together and locked her in. We're locker partners. So that was really fun to see her. And, uh, we had two new plant vendors who had succulents, extremely popular. Uh, new sauce vendors, um, allergy friendly baked goods, pretty organic pickle. We had Mediterranean flavors, spring and hummus and Puerto an sonata was a really truly authentic Mexican food. Uh, we're like my favorite vendors. Um, we had Baba Foods, Junebug Sauces, the sweets. Um, so food trucks games this year new, we brought out the giant chess. We brought out all kinds of games for the kids to play ping pong, cornhole. And it really made the vendor stay longer. I mean, the stay longer and the vendors noticed that because they buy something, they leave and then they come back like an hour or two later and get something else. And as always, we're dog friendly. So the field really made our location unique. The vendors absolutely love, uh, how easy the setup is in this location. And, uh, they always let me know, let me remember that. Um, okay. So we had our balloon gal out, Girl Mezer. And when the shoppers voted on their fan favorite, it was the old red barn popping company. We always have fresh produce and fruit. Fresh flowers. And this year with the heat, we had to help people remember to take good care of their, keep them hydrated. Uh, Wes Chris Fire and Rescue was amazing. They came out just about every other week and the kids just loved, um, they gave out frisbees and halts. And really interacted with the firefighters. We have live music. And, uh, this year new, I asked our intern from University of Puget Sound to go around and find out how many, uh, in fact, were women owned businesses and veteran owned businesses. And you can see here, we have almost 30 women owned businesses. We have over a dozen women co-own businesses and a handful of veteran owned businesses. Uh, these are just a few highlights showing that our vendors like Burn Bright Candles support other causes. So they in particular support, um, those who've suffered from a loss of a child. And when you burn down the candle, it has necklace inside with like a little heart or an angel on it. And Grace Condiments is a woman in minority and veteran owned business. And they, um, with their profits, uh, give money to a variety of foundations. Sergeant Hart BBQ sauces, he started, uh, just by entering a local barbecue competition. And from there, it's grown into a big business for him, meaning that he's at our market, but he's also getting into, uh, major grocery chains. So what do our shoppers love about the market? We do do a survey every year. And this year, our vendors came out loud and strong, I think, because we really increased the number and variety. And, um, that it's local, shopping local, um, the healthy bucks and so on. And what our vendors love about the market, the community, they love, uh, the, the Lakewood community members that come out. They say they're so nice. Um, they love the location, the time and their sales. They were absolutely thrilled. Um, they said they did the best at our market. So, um, majority, we'd like to do some, uh, demo- demographic information to find out who, who are shoppers, who's coming. Um, and so we know that the majority of shoppers are women between the age 31 and 60. Um, the, the majority of our participants are from Washington state and we need to know this for our lodging tax grant where we get money. But over 13% were from out of state, which is a really big number. Um, and over half are from Lakewood, but you can see we also get a, a big contingency of people from other cities and including Tacoma. Um, so this is a very interesting statistic. Uh, 45% of the people were coming to the market for the first time now. And we did a similar survey with Summer Fest. It was 50% were coming for the first time. So as much as, it just speaks to the transition in the community and that we need to constantly retell our story. We constantly need to advertise. We can't rest on our laurels. Every year I get that new signage out and, um, spend a good chunk of the budget on advertising. It's important. It works. And, uh, this just reiterates it. So 43% of the shoppers returned to the market every week and the majority spent between $15 and $30. The mid, almost half shop at other farmer's markets as well with, with Silicon, um, being the most common. And you know, DuPont did open a market this year. So that was one more market that was close by and they have almost all the same vendors as we have. So it's over 62% of the shoppers said the market was their primary reason for coming, but that they do plan on spending money in the surrounding area. So it really does help the, uh, does have economic impact. Um, they specifically said Starbucks, Target and Albertsons. And I know I go to that Starbucks on Silicon Boulevard. And they always say, we know when you're having events because our sales go way up. So we're glad to see that, um, money trickle into other places, other stores. Um, so this is how people have heard about the market. Now, this hasn't changed in the six years I've been here. It's always road signs are the, are the main way that people hear about the market or find out about the market. And then word of mouth. Those are the top two. Um, that has not changed. And then, um, as for social media, it looks like Facebook was the main, um, way people found out about it on social media. So we asked our shoppers, um, what do you love about?
My favorite thing about the Lakewood Farmer's Market is of course yummy ice cream. It's nice and cool.
Favorite part of the farmer's market is the fruits and veggies.
My favorite part about the farmer's market here in Lakewood is the pottery.
Our favorite thing about the Lakewood Farmer's Market is definitely the burger from stacks.
My favorite part about the Lakewood Farmer's Market is that very friendly staff.
I'd have to say my favorite thing about the Lakewood Farmer's Market so far is this huge burrito. I don't know how I'm I'm going to try.
Favorite parts of Farmer's Market 2021 is the pride of the people with their product.
My favorite thing about the farmer's market is all the craftful vendors.
My favorite thing at the farmer's market is definitely the pizza.
My favorite thing is all of the food trucks that I get to come eat.
My favorite thing is all of the food trucks that I get to come eat and I get to bring my key.
So that was produced by the intern from University of Puget Sound. And then we asked our vendors what they love about the market.
Favorite thing about coming to the market out here in Lakewood is all the families and the people that we've gotten to meet out here.
One of my favorite things about being down here every week is the community.
Main thing is the Lakewood city. It's just perfect to do that market.
My favorite thing about the Lakewood Farmers Market is actually seeing all of the customers.
The favorite thing I like about the market here is the people.
So what I really enjoy the most about the Lakewood Farmers Market is I appreciate the variety of vendors. I very much enjoy looking out and seeing all of the kids play on the park, in the park. And that they get to enjoy the day with as a family.
Part about being a vendor at the Lakewood Farmers Market is having all the great local fresh produce that comes from Washington state.
What's great about the market is just has a sense of family.
My favorite thing about the Lakewood Farmers Market is the market manager, Sheeran.
Favorite thing about the market is the joy I see in the people's faces as they come by my booth.
My favorite thing in the Lakewood Market are the people that come through. They are happy and they're very generous and they love my product.
So again, that was produced by Bridget. But it's so nice to hear firsthand from people. And to hear over and over again, you know, how how nice all the shoppers are from Lakewood community. And of course, you know, to run a good program, you've got to get feedback, that critical feedback. So we always ask, what, what can we do differently? What would make it better? So people spoke about parking in traffic, a bigger variety of food and vendors, more shaded areas. That's definitely a big thing and more seating. That's definitely doable. Food stamps, quieter generators. Oh yeah. And more and louder music. Okay, so that's a wrap on the Farmers Market. And then during that same summertime, we had our summer concert series on Thursday night. We had seven concerts starting in July, ending in August, and they were a big hit. Got a little bit to show you here on that.
Lakewood's Summer Nights Pavilion Concert Series kicked off last night with a show by Nightwave. They played some eighties jams and kids lost their minds on the dance floor, having fun. It was a lot of fun for everybody. These concerts are held at the Pavilion at Port Silicon Park. And a lot of good shows coming up. Next week, July 22nd, that's Thursday, is Good Coast Swing. We also have some salsa, soul, some R and B, even karaoke with a live band behind you. So thrilled for that. Come on down, get footloose, get a little crazy. Folks had a lot of fun last night. It's been a long time since we've heard of live music in Lakewood. So much needed, Summer Nights Pavilion. Yes.
So you heard Jim talking about the lineup and this just gives you an idea of how we try to really have lots of different genres. And the attendance, let's see, the highest attendance was 450 people. And then we had drive-in movies. You know, we kind of explored this in 2020. That was something new for us. And with COVID, we thought, you know, let's try to. It wasn't as popular this year, so we won't be doing that next year. But we still had a good revenue. We had to cancel one because of the weather. And of course, there was the unfortunate incident with the shooting. So that cut the number of movies. And then we led into the Fall with Truck and Tractor Day. WSCCU is our sponsor and that allows us to get 800 to 1,000 pumpkins to give away. And that's really meaningful to the families, the hay rise, just kind of a sense of normalcy. Again, the ability to come together, to unite, to bond, to see people in a fun, healthy atmosphere outside. And right now, we're in the midst of registration for the new Real Life 96 Film Competition. It's our inaugural competition. And the majority of the credit here goes to Linda McDermott, who's the Chair of the Arts Commission. She thought of this idea. She has put so much work into it. And so I'll just show you a little promo. So we're thrilled to have 20 teams registered. It's a great number for our first time. We can take up to 32 teams that can have up to 15 members each. The youngest is 13 years old and the oldest is, you know, in their 60s. So it runs the kiamit and we have some school districts who've applied to be teams. We will do some, well, January 5th is when the registration closes. And then the showing will be on March 19th at McGavin. In the meantime, our judges will be looking at the films and deciding if they all get to enter, if they all meet the qualifications and then, and then we'll go from there. Then the registration fee is $50. This year, like 2020, we are having, we had a virtual tree lighting. And then last year was our first annual drive-through parade of lights. We had to do that again this year, but we moved it to Port Silicon Park because of the long traffic lines. And it was last week, I saw the majority of you there. Thank you for being out there on that cold night. We still have long lines, lesson learned. Hopefully next year we'll be in person. But we were so grateful for the community members that came out, these organizations and businesses, out of the goodness of their heart and stayed all day and decorated their vehicles. So this is Merritt Construction and they won the award for most original. They got these nice metal trophies from Robie. And the best theme was from Lyle Moving and Storage. They were already planning what they're going to do for next year. I was so grateful because I thought after the cold weather, no one will come back. And then the Lakes High School cheer team got most spirited. Most inspirational was Eminem's classics. And that's because they came out at 10 a.m. And at about noon, the huge winds burst came and blew and broke their tent and can of the majority of their decorations. But they came back with smiles. They were just smiling all day. And I wanted to do a special shout out to the Original House of Donuts because they're so supportive of our events and they always bring dozens of donuts for the volunteers. And I just also wanted to thank you all for being out there. We feel so supported. You're at every single event we have. You are, you're in the trenches working with us. And it's just heartwarming. And thank you so much for being out there on such a cold night. And that concludes that particular presentation. And then I will share my screen again and just jump into the 2022 events so that you can see, while it's fresh in your mind, what we're going to do. In 2022, we'll kick off with the MLK Celebration in January. We're planning on having Summer Fest in July. But what's new and exciting is, you know, you, you put together this beautiful Colonial Plaza with the, you know, the wonderful Brook Street. And so we're going to have a series of events there. And they're going to be from May to September. And the themes are going to be Dancing in the Streets, Carnival of Cultures, which is much like an international festival, Jazz Night and Vintage Car Show, and Fiesta de la Familia. And those are going to be on Saturdays from 4 to 8:30. And then we will have our Real Life Film Competition screening, March 19th. We'll have the Farmers Market. I wanted to let you know, we're planning on having that on Tuesdays. And the reason for Tuesdays is that when everything was closed for the virus, I didn't notice that there were these big festivals that my vendors went to. But this year they started opening up and all of a sudden it was like, hey, where are my, where are my good vendors? And they're like, oh, we have a three or four day festival to go to. And I realized, okay, we've got to change this. And then, of course, I always speak to all of them and find out what a good day in time is. So they love Tuesdays. That's a day that it's before DuPont and it's before Silicon. And I really wanted to get on the front end of all the local farmers markets. So we were the first one. And we're moving the Summer Concert Series to that night to follow the Farmers Market. So kind of focusing on the two events and doing some cross pollination of the people that come into the park to attend both. Then we'll have Truck and Tractor Day in October and our in-person Christmas parade. The last PowerPoint I have is very quick and it's on the Signal Box Wrap. So I just wanted to quickly what we've done to date for the public art program. So we have implemented, well, by the end of this year, we'll have implemented almost eight wraps. This is called Steel Across by Kelly Woney in Silicon Boulevard in Lakewood Drive. I don't know if you may have seen it. Top of the box. This is called Tribal Quilt by Rosa Cruz and it's on Bridgeport and San Fran Avenue. This is on Bridgeport and 108th and it's called Colorful Rocks by Rosa Cruz. And subsequently, that far right box is also wrapped. This is called Leap of Faith by KDB and it's on 84th and South Tacoma Way. This is Luminous Horizon, our latest one by Susan Russell Hall on private lake drive and well there. This is yet to go up, but it's in the process and it's not very near by Christine Westfall on Bridgeport and 100.
What's, what's the life expectancy of those Sally? Do they hold up pretty well, the milars?
They do. I believe it's about seven years.
Is it? Okay, great.
Seven to 10 years, yeah. This is going to be on Silicon and Ardmore. Called Green Herring. And then Jennifer has created something called Lakewood's curiosity cabinet. This is detailed. And so we're going to put it on Silicon Boulevard and Far West Drive where there's more foot traffic. But it speaks to Lakewood's unique cultural and military history, diversity, our indigenous plants, the Gary Oak, the Big Leaf Maple, Douglas fir, yellow water lilies, and it has a portrait of Chief Lushai and Lieutenant Colonel Silas Casey. That was it for the wraps. And then we wanted to implement one mural each year. And thanks to LMCC, who took the reins on this incredible mural called The World Lives in Lakewood. We got to be a partner with that and that fulfilled our one mural. And if we got to show it, it was at the 25th anniversary of the LMCT booth. So thank you, Councilmember Moss, for your work on that, making that come to fruition. That concludes my presentation for special events for 2021 and moving into 2022. Are there any questions?
Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Deputy Moore. Sally, just wanted, on the parade Saturday night, I just wanted to let you know that I've gotten the calls. They didn't mind the wait. They were disappointed that there was nothing for them to see along that route. It's that even if it had been lights around the water, it would have been nice to see. But just wanted to share that with you in case we have to do that again. Hopefully we don't. And the other thing is, I know it was an oversight, but for the 25th anniversary, LMCC, when we sent out our invitations, our notices for the Michael Powers and the Beer Garden, we included the city website, the city's logo and talked about the city involved. Some of the committee members and the board members were disappointed that LMCC was not mentioned in any of the city's advertisements. So, and I assured them it was an oversight, but I wanted to make, bring you, make you aware of that.
Thanks, because that's very important. And I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moss, Mr. Brandstetter, and then Mr. Bokey.
Yeah. Because thank you for the, for the presentation, but more important, thank you for your year of work to bring this to the community, to be able to go and do that. And, and, and I would just say that some commonality amongst all of the events that I intended, I guess all of them, was that they, they all were permeated by a sense of optimism. In a year of when that might not have been the case, if the, the people involved in putting them on, you know, hadn't had infectious optimism as they went about doing that. And so I would thank you for that. Looking ahead to 2022, I guess the question is whether or not we were going to have some sort of a, of an Independence Day related demonstration. I know we got a presentation about what was being considered from fireworks to a drone show to something to do that. Is there some thought that one of those types of things might be incorporated in one of the events that you mentioned, either on the plaza or as a element of one of, of one of the concert nights or something like that, so that we could do some kind of a testing of that sort of an event in, in a year of when we're hoping to see fireworks pare themselves down to a single day. You could look to sort of incorporate something that people might interpret as a substitute for needing to set off fireworks on their driveway.
Thank you. Yes, I know discussions are underway. So it's top of mind. Nothing's been decided, but we're looking at all of our options.
Okay, well, you know, the, 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 the good news is you've got great successes to build on. And there were successes that were accomplished in a difficult year. And so I'm really optimistic that you can do as we move further towards the end of this pandemic situation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandstetter, Mr. Bokey. Thank you, Mr. Brandstetter, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Uh, hey Sally, just great job, I think, throughout this year and a really, I, I still think, uh, in 2021, still difficult circumstances, people not wanting to get out, but not always making sure that, uh, that, that they could or that they should. Um, the farmers markets were, were great. The heat got unreal. I, I realize that. I, I really do want to do a couple of, the utility box wraps, I think you're doing a great job on. Um, I know Tacoma's been at it for years, so I don't know how many they've put in over the years. Um, I know the county has, has haltingly moved in the direction of trying to put in wraps, but for whatever reason, it seems to take a really long time to get some wraps done. So I, I'm really pleased that the, at the consistency, um, consistent pace that you've been able to get the wraps put in. Um, I, how many more boxes do you have out there to wrap?
I believe we have sixty-two in, in total.
Oh, okay. So we got a lot more.
About fifty, a little over fifty.
Yeah, a little over fifty?
No, it's not to say we're going to wrap them all, but let's say we have plenty if we, we choose to.
Okay, so you got a few more years of work to do.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then, uh, the real life thing, I think that that, did, did that idea germinate with your staff then? And then they just decided to move forward on that because I, it's kind of a neat idea.
It's the Arts Commission and in particular Linda McDermott.
Okay, yeah, that's, that seems like a really, I hope it goes off very well. Um, and the other thing I want to compliment you on is the Saturday street festivals. Um, I think they're neat ideas. Um, I know, and, and I, I think that the ideas that you have in there, I'm, I'm interested to see all of them. And, um, but, uh, you, you know, it really does answer our call that when we put the, the Colonial Center in, that, uh, we use it and, and use it for some, some interesting things. So I'm, I'm glad to see that we're going to be using it on a consistent basis this year, this coming year, and hopefully, um, you know, good, good things will happen down there. But thank you very much for, for a good year and I'm really looking forward to next year too. So, good job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just think everything that the Parks Department and that Sally, that you do is wonderful. I love it. I love all the activities. You guys are doing everything right. I love seeing the statistics on who your vendors are, um, you know, what they're representing. And I also love to see the data on your advertising. I think that that is really, really important information that sometimes gets lost. And so I appreciate what you guys do with that extra little bit of, um, push to get the information out there. I'm really looking forward to the Saturdays, um, at Colonial Plaza. I think those are so exciting. And I just am, I think that with the lights and you'll know, you'll have the vendors and it'll just all be dialed in. So I think that's a really exciting, um, event that we all should look forward to next year. And then me personally, I wouldn't mind coming to the farmer's market as a council member, maybe some of the other council members. Um, schedule us for a couple of, uh, of those dates that maybe we could, one or two of us could come and just be scheduled to show up and represent and be at the city booth. I think that that would be a really good thing and a way to get council out there a little bit more. So maybe that's something we could look into. But thank you. I love it. I love it all.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a, an amazing team. It's, it's definitely, everything is such a big team effort here. And, um, I love your idea about coming out to the market. So thank you.
Especially if we put a dunk tank with one of us on it. I think we get a lot of participation probably for that.
It's always you, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Well, I just want to add my, uh, two or four cents, Sally. I think you guys have done a great bit of work this year. It's just been fantastic. I, I hope that with the incredible events you have lined up for 2022, that you don't wear yourselves out. You've got adequate staffing to help you do everything. Is that, that can be a challenge. You, you run pretty lean. Um, the wraps are fantastic. It shows the community that we're doing something with regard to public art. And I, I think that was just a great first step and kudos to the Arts Commission for doing that. And the Film Ninety-Six, uh, I think that could lead into a really cool cultural thing where we might be able to use some of the interior spaces, maybe down the road, if we ever get the barn redone, that could be a neat little venue for that. Some of those kinds of things. Um, interesting on your statistics about how people are finding the market, a lot of it was either road signs or word of mouth, which is amazing to me, which is great. But it also to me signals that our pending reader board signage, depending on where it's going to be placed, will be fantastic. Not just for the market, but for all these city events. And it's, you know, again, shows that there's utility in different means of communication to the, the broader audience. So I look forward to that. And music with the market on Tuesdays, I'm a little hesitant about Tuesdays shifting the date, but the fact that you're going to combine it with the music in the park and the farmer's market, I think could really be a great win-win. And it provides that stickiness factor to keep people there and the vendors will probably hang around and, and sell more stuff. So I think that's, that'll be a good, a good test. So thanks for your work. Any other?
Thank you so much. Thanks for all of your support.
Yeah, you bet. And again, I think we've, you'll, you'll get plenty, you'll get plenty of public comment on the lines for the, uh, static holiday light parade, but you know, we'll move on from that and we'll hopefully do it in person next year and have a real parade again. So we're, we're bludgeoned by our success, right? With lots of people who want to come, which is good. Okay, uh, if there are no further, uh, comments or kudos for Sally, we will turn to the last item, which is our Pierce County Comprehensive Plan to End Homelessness update. And for this, we have our planning manager Tiffany Spear.
Good evening, Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of the council, Tiffany Spear. Um, I will share a PowerPoint, which is actually also in your packet tonight, starting at page two hundred and six. So the comprehensive plan to end homelessness is a Pierce County Council project. It began earlier this year when there was a resolution adopted that said, we need an ad hoc committee to explain how and define what should be in a comprehensive plan to end homelessness with the idea initially, as reflected in the May twenty-fifth resolution they adopted, that by the end of this year, there would be, um, a plan. And also there would be, uh, a way to increase capacity in homelessness, uh, units or beds in order to end street homelessness by the end of this year. The City of Lakewood representative, myself, participated in both the initial ad hoc committee and then the, uh, committee that was creating the plan throughout the year. Last Tuesday, on December seventh, there was a presentation made to the county's Human Services Committee, which summarized the plan itself. Um, first and foremost, the idea was to, um, provide, what is the state of the situation right now? What are the costs or cost benefit actually? That might come from a comprehensive effort toward ending homelessness in the county. And then also one of the bigger items that I just wanted to make sure you were aware of as a council is there's a suggestion in the plan that there be created what they're calling a unit, excuse me, a uni- we'll get to it. I've lost it. Sorry. There's six goals within the plan. There it is, Unified Homeless System. And the idea under Strategy One Point One, it's called a Unified Regional Office, uh, of homelessness. And this is a somewhat different approach than has happened historically, as you know, in the county for homelessness services. There's been, uh, nonprofits and non-governmental organizations working in this arena. And then jurisdictions have worked independently regarding homelessness, but this is an effort to create something that would be uh, not only for Pierce County, but for the cities within the county to be working together. Um, the idea here is, um, cost effectiveness and unified performance for, um, the people experiencing homelessness. And so there would have to be some changes happening on the inside of the system, if you will, where a single organization worked to, um, coordinate efforts, potentially coordinate funding, uh, and potentially be actually a governing organization for all of the different jurisdictions and agencies dealing with homelessness in Pierce County. Um, and so here you'll see coordination among the partners. You'll see the, um, various items listed, including the cities and towns. So again, the idea is to create a new stand-up organization for, uh, coordinated effort to work to end homelessness. The idea here as well is to track, um, information about those experiencing homelessness in order to be able to over time, um, address those issues further and further, quote, upstream, meaning making it easier and easier for someone to stay out of homelessness or a family to stay out of homelessness, because there would be some data where maybe agencies can anticipate those at risk and assist them before they actually are, end up on the street. As of now, Pierce County Human Services deals with, um, the county's homeless program. But the idea presented to the county council last week was maybe they would hand the reins over to this new Unified Regional Office as well. The second goal in there, uh, is to talk about targeted universalism, which is something which is truly trying to look at the population experiencing homelessness from all angles and trying to understand how to best provide the services needed by everyone. So this is regardless of gender, um, sexual orientation, race, ethnicity, religion, uh, any sort of disability, just making sure that the way the homeless system is run, it is accessible to anyone and everyone. Preventing homelessness was an issue raised and stressed. And historically in the homelessness world, prevention hasn't been a big item. It's been handling the crisis of someone or a family who is on the street right now and how to get them off the street. This plan is talking about, we need to be looking again, that upstream term, where we're trying to prevent anyone from having to experience homelessness before getting help. Fourth goal is to, uh, making easier the coordination among various, quote, systems. So whether it's the foster system, the criminal justice system, behavioral health, uh, workforce development, all of these different almost siloed systems within our communities, having them talk to each other more often and more consistently to help, um, develop more of a, um, common understanding across the different systems and communication across the different systems, potentially for, um, how to help prevent homelessness for a, a family, for an individual that maybe more than one system is working on or working with, without knowing that other systems are as well. Looking at meeting immediate needs and, uh, shortening the experience of homelessness as much as possible. And expanding permanent housing in order to meet the need for additional units. So as the council's aware, there is a, an ongoing and, and increasing shortage, not only of units for those experiencing homelessness, but for affordable housing across the board. And so the idea here is to talk about, um, increasing permanent supportive housing units, uh, rapid rehousing units, but also just affordable housing within, um, all of our cities and, and the county to help with housing, uh, stock overall. One thing that was talked about in the plan as well is that yes, there is cost related to this plan and what it suggests, but there's also cost savings. So if you were, for instance, to provide permanent housing to an individual, that would be twenty-two thousand a year as opposed to forty thousand a year for someone experiencing homelessness and accessing a number of different systems, be they health, social services or other things. Oops, sorry. So the, um, estimated cost under this plan was for an additional a hundred and seventeen million dollars is needed for operations, and that's for not only unincorporated county, but including all of the cities. And then fifteen million a year would be capital costs for shelter, uh, improvements for, for several years in order to create the number of units needed. Unmet capital costs for permanent supportive housing, almost, uh, four hundred million. However, the idea of, um, improving the prevention of homelessness, you could be saving up to forty-eight million a year in other systems, including police, medical care and others. So yes, there is significant cost being suggested in this plan, but there's also the opportunity to see some savings to offset that over time. So the next steps, after, uh, last week's presentation by the, uh, Human Services Department of the County to the county's Human Services Committee, there was call within the committee members to reach out to local government. So I believe that the City of Lakewood's Council and City Manager will be contacted in the not-too-distant future about, um, first of all, discussing the creation of this Unified Regional Office, uh, and also maybe some other potential for cooperation in the shorter term. And then just to make everyone aware, the county council member for District Six actually chairs this committee and she expressed her interest in creating this office as well. So this link, which is in the materials for tonight, is actually to the discussion about, uh, this topic. If any of you or any members of the public want to watch it, it's a, an interesting discussion by the county council. Uh, it's there. It's about a forty-minute conversation there. And that ends my presentation unless you have any questions for me.
Well, thank you, Tiffany. Before I turn it over to the, the council, my question on the regional office that's contemplated, where does shape fit in? Because we just funded participation in shape, which has a housing planning component to it. So how would that mesh and avoid overlap? What's the thought?
In the, in immediate future, shape is dealing with affordable housing units. So market rate maybe down to eighty percent of area median income, whereas this comprehensive plan to end homelessness is focused on fifty percent AMI and below. So it's a different, um, economic strata we're talking about with the two plans. Having said that, the comprehensive plan to end homelessness talks about creating additional units to help. And so at some point, you may well have to figure out how those two organizations can, uh, coordinate with each other, so there isn't the overlap. For now, shape is higher economic, uh, level. The, the comprehensive plan is really dealing with those zero to fifty percent AMI.
Got it. Okay. And do you recall when the point in time count's going to happen this year? It's January sometime, right?
Yeah, it's usually the third week of January, so it would be the week of January twentieth, twenty twenty-two, I believe. And I can certainly follow up. They're calling for volunteers for that right now.
Yeah, and I may talk about that in council comments to see if there may be interest in some of us teaming up together to go out, because it's really informative. I did it, uh, a couple of years ago with Julie White at Pierce College and we went out here in Lakewood and talked to a variety of folks and it was really, it was very, very educational and interesting. Challenging, you know, emotionally when you talk to people for sure, but it was very educational. So anyway, any other questions of members of council? If not, well, thank you very much for your work in this, Tiffany. I'm sure you'll keep us in the loop.
Yes, I'll be sure to notify if you don't hear from the council first about next steps. Thank you.
Right. And, and before you go, I just have one question on the, the work you're doing on the Lehigh, uh, letter that went out this last week. I had a question about the, uh, the cost structure, structure with that. Is, is the city ultimately going to be assisting with the operational cost to some extent, or was it just the acquisition?
As it stands, it's a somewhat complicated answer, if you'll bear with me. A million dollars was provided to Lehigh to make the purchase. Seven hundred thousand of that is considered a bridge loan. Meaning if they receive what they think they're going to receive next spring from the, the Department of Commerce, it's called a rapid acquisition grant, that seven hundred thousand, at least in part, will come back. Hopefully all of it will come back to the city. So that can be used for operations, for, for instance, the twelve beds that the city is, um, uh, reserved according to contract. Or the city could take some or all of that seven hundred thousand and simply use it for other ARPA expenditures. So we're waiting to see, A, if they get that, uh, grant, and B, how much we're actually going to get back as a city.
Got it. Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And with that, I think, um, we will bid you adieu for the evening. Tiffany, thank you very much. Items tentatively scheduled for the December twenty twenty twenty-one regular city council meeting are set forth on your agenda for tonight. They include a proclamation recognizing contributions made to the Hindu diaspora and community, authorizing the execution of inter-local agreement for comprehensive, solid and hazardous waste management planning with Pierce County, authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters relating to contracting a debtors will review the issuance, sale and delivery of the twelve point two million in aggregate principal amount for the limited tax general obligation bonds to finance a portion of the city's capital improvement program projects. And we will review the approval of project- And we will review the approval of projects to be funded with revenue generated by the city's transportation benefit district. Via ordinance, we'll review the creation of the tree preservation ad hoc committee and will approve the American Rescue Act Plan Program expenditures to date. And with that, we'll turn to reports by the city manager.
Thank you Deputy Mayor and good evening council. I had four items, but one of them was just addressed. By Ms. Spear, so I, I, I won't get into that issue regarding Lehigh. And what I can tell you is Ms. Spear continues to work with them representing the city. And I'm confident that that will come to a fruitful resolution. And we look forward to the opening of the facility because we do have some individuals that we would like to try and convince to go over there and utilize. Not just the beds, the emergency shelter, but also some of the services that they'll be, that they'll be offering. So more to, more to come on that. The second item actually relates to a, I'm a perk notice of compliance, which is the. Public Employment Relations Commission and I'm waiting on one of our labor attorneys to join us. And I don't see him yet. So Ms. Walkner, I'll.
He is trying to get into the, he's trying to get access right now and I've asked both the HR director and. The city clerk to forward me the notice in the event that he's not able to reach us.
Okay.
Want to make a few more announcements, we can loop back to this.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll come back to that. I have one other item I'd like to share with the council. It's the one evening where actually I have a short city managers report. So I, thank you Deputy Mayor, thank you. So in a moment here, when I'm done with this item, I'll, I'll go into song and dance if that's okay with everybody. So, yeah. Thank you Councilmember Farmer for the vote of confidence there. I appreciate that. So.
We, we could deal with the dance, perhaps not the song from you, but yeah.
That, touche. Okay, I can, yeah, because I can do a jig, I can do a jig, but somebody's going to have to sing along. So. Actually, in all seriousness, just a reminder that this Saturday is a joint ribbon cutting ceremony. Celebrating the opening of the bridge across Chambers Creek, which is a partnership project, project between. The city of Lakewood, the city of University Place and, and Pierce County. And you are all invited, you are all considered VIPs, very important persons. And if you do plan on attending, please let us know. And the, the process is to rally at the. Phillips Road. Trailhead there and Ms. Dawsworth will lead us down to the bridge itself. I understand Mayor Anderson is going to be out of town, so Deputy Mayor, if you're available to make some comments. We, we, and we can help you with that. You'll have a few moments to do that. The event itself, you know, just because of the environment that we're in, it is pretty tight down there. It's, it's kind of restricted to the number of folks who can attend. However, the event is going to be live streams, I believe by the county. And then it'll also be available for folks to watch after the fact as well. So again, if you plan on attending, please let myself and or the city clerk know. And we look forward to, we, we look forward to seeing you, seeing you down there. So with that, let me check to see if Mr. Bolosina is available. And I see he is, so if we could please invite Mike Bolosina into the meeting. Mr. Bolosina is one of our labor attorneys with Summit Law and he is going to cover with you. A ruling from Perk on a particular unfair labor practice. Those four items, we actually persevered on. Four of, on three of them, and he is going to cover that for you. So with that, if Mr. Bolosina is available, city clerk, if we can let him in.
City manager, we invited him to join on screen and he's disappeared. I'm not sure what happened there.
Okay. Let's give him a second. Hopefully he'll come back. And Ms. Walker, maybe if, if we can't get him on screen, maybe he can phone in.
Um, yeah, we'll try to do that. I would go into council comments and we'll keep trying to get him here.
Thank you. So Deputy Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Well, thank you very much. So. Before we move into the closed session, obviously, we're going to go back and chat with Mr. Bolosina, but first we'll have council comments and I'll turn. Oh, Mr. Branster has a question first. Go ahead and take this chance to ask your question and lunch and.
Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. I, I, I was, I was wondering with respect to the bridge. And new bridge in the, in the trail there. Do we have some plans to put some wayfinding signs at some locations along Phillips Road? That will allow folks going forward to actually find their way there. It's rather mysterious.
So customer brand said, the short answer to that is yes, and that will be part of the next phase of the project, which is actually creating the trail system. Down in there, which is under right now kind of preliminary design at this point in time, but the short answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Branstad, why don't you go ahead with your council comments since you've got the floor?
Well, I, I have. You know, have had a really good start to the holiday season. I think the community has too. There have been a lot of positive things that were going on and I'm hearing, you know, positive things from people who are. Just sort of getting in, getting into the spirit of things and. So I think we're, we're, we're moving in the right direction and the fact that we're ending. Twenty twenty one that had many attributes of a challenging year. That it also is one that I think that the, the community has proven itself. Resilient and forward looking and I'm looking forward to twenty twenty two.
Very good. Thank you very much. How about Councilmember Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'm, I, I think that I just wanted to. Give a plug for our city staff for the events and the work that they've done throughout the year. It's been wonderful. We've accomplished a lot. I'm excited about that. And as far as our event on Saturday night, I'm a little warmer tonight. And I'm looking forward to the new year. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Farmer.
I'm with Councilmember Moss. It was a little chilly, but it was an amazing event. And so I will pile on the bandwagon of kudos to city staff. Fantastic job. Those, those events take months to plan, just a huge amount of work. I also wanted to give a shout out to the youth council. They were there, they were, they were making the gift bags. And then they had to remake the gift bags in, in order to get everything in one bag. And so they were, they were resourceful. I wanted to give a shout out to Sergeant Jeff Carroll and Sergeant John Fraser, who was hilarious. The city council was handing out the gift bags and they kept like, come on, you need to be faster at it. And then all of a sudden I turned around and, and these two amazing officers were, were. They were organized and they were getting these bags out to, to the cars and they, they, they rallied the, the tutu. And it was, it was a sight to behold. And so they've completely put us out of business, council. They did a fantastic job. I also wanted to mention that we, speaking of shape, we did have the first meeting this week. Where we elected our leadership. Mayor Victoria Woodards is the chair and Tacoma Mayor Victoria Woodards. And Furcrest Mayor Hunter George is the vice chair. The manager of the group is not yet hired. They are, they are going to revise the job description. And go back out with an, with a recruitment either before the holidays or at the first of the year. And so as soon as that's ready, I'll, I'll forward that to you in case you know somebody who, who might be qualified. We had some initial discussions about our work plan and in order to really dig into the work plan. We are going to be surveying signatory cities and figuring out what we're, what example. Is Lakewood doing right now in, in regards to affordable housing? The cities in Pierce County are doing a remarkable amount and so getting, getting that all together and, and looking at themes and. And that sort of thing. And also surveying the elected bodies to, to see what exactly we want to get out of shape. And if we have any particular, any particular thoughts on that matter. So I'm, I'm excited for that. I also wanted to mention that if you didn't see the notice, Lakewood United is holding a meeting. I believe tomorrow morning to talk about its future. And I believe they're looking for some help in setting up their regular meetings. Or if just, just to kind of see, see where things are going with that very, very historical, historical group. So I invite you to, to check in and, and provide your opinion. That's it for me, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. And let's see, Mr. Bokey, you're next.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Deputy Mayor.
And last but not least, because of your swearing in, Councilmember Bell, the floor is yours.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I don't have anything else to add, just that I am very excited and happy to be sworn in today. So I, that's all I have to add.
Well, great. We're happy for you and happy to be with you. So.
To you. Thank you.
Just a couple of quick comments and we'll turn back to Mr. Bolosina. So the public officials reception last week, I had a chance to go to that. Sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, lots of folks in attendance, really great opportunity to meet folks and I constantly. Hear really positive comments from others about what a great team we have here in Lakewood. And so that's really nice to hear from other elected people who observe what we do and what you all do together with the Mr. Caulfield at the executive staff helm. So thank you for that. The holiday parade was great. We stood. Stood together in the cold for two and a half to three hours and I thought it was fantastic. I walked the line and chatted with every one of the exhibitors there. And they all seem to be having a pretty good time and enjoyed seeing the smiling faces by all the folks coming through in the community. In the community parade. So great presentations tonight, Mr. Caulfield, by all the staff members. We have a lot to be proud of. And it kind of leads into the season where, you know, there's a lot of. Challenge out there, but we have much to be thankful for here in Lakewood. Financially, we've been good stewards of the public's money and it reflects in the third quarter financial report. And I think that gives us the opportunity to do more good things in twenty twenty two. So thank you and your staff for that. And with that, Mr. Bolosina, I will turn the floor over to you and to. Mr. Caulfield for that item on the perk notice of compliance.
Well, again, I just wanted to introduce Mr. Bolosina. He is one of our labor attorneys. He is employed by Summit Law. And I've had the great opportunity to work with him throughout my career and we are well represented by him. And so he is here this evening to report on the outcome of an unfair labor practice. So with that, Mr. Bolosina, the floor is yours, sir.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Caulfield. And I'm sorry for the delay. I had some technical difficulties getting, getting into the meeting, but they're, they have been solved. So an unfair labor practice complaint is actually a complaint either made by a union or by management. To Perk, which is the Public Employment. Relationship Commission. And, and what they do is they basically regulate and moderate. The relationship between unions and, and management. And, and either side can go to them and make a public, a, an unfair labor practice complaint, which is referred to as a ULP. In this case, the police union, LPIG, filed their ULP in mid-May of two thousand nineteen. And there's a lot, interesting story about what was happening at the time. The union was in a state of complete disarray. Jeremy Valley was the president of the union and he was basically in the process of being recalled by the members. And, and the, the, the results of the recall election were, were very unclear and uncertain. So this was, it, it resembled sort of like, you know, like, like ancient Rome. When, you know, one, one Caesar was trying to get rid of another. Or, or perhaps a, you know, a reality show on Bravo, but there was a lot of disarray going on. Jeremy Valley actually filed the unfair labor practice complaint. And, and if you look at the complaint, about eighty percent of the complaint is directed. At his fellow union executive board members and at his fellow union members. There are at the tail end of his complaint, some allegations against the city. And those are the only things that Perk allowed to proceed to a hearing were four allegations against the city and I'll briefly summarize those. The first was Chief Zarro asked the Guild Board. If it's supported taking a grievance over Sergeant Navasky's demotion to arbitration. And this is based on a contract provision that says that, that an individual union member can grieve. His discipline internally, but in order to take it to arbitration and have an arbitrator decide, the union has to support the grievance. So he was basically asking the executive board, you know, Sergeant, Sergeant Navasky wants to, to, to grieve his. To arbitration, his demotion, do you support it? The second claim had to do with a very similar set of circumstances and that's a few months later. Another police officer was fired, Eric Bell, and, and the city got a request to take that to arbitration. And Chief Zarro asked again, does the union support this grievance and taking it to arbitration? And, and the reason why Chief Zarro was asking these questions is because I encouraged him to. He told me that it was unclear whether it was the individual employee or the union that was taking this arbitration. And there had been changes in the way the union has been doing things and he just didn't know if this contract provision. Was being honored and satisfied or not. And I said, well, if you don't know, you know, what you can do. Is ask the executive board whether they support it or not, you know, a simple question and a simple answer. And that's what he did in those two cases. The third, the third claim had to do with Assistant Chief Unfred, who is the liaison to the unions in the police department. He requested a one week extension to complete some shift bidding. And, and Jeremy Valley as president responded no to the request for an extension. And then told him that in dealing with the union, you are to email and communicate only with me. Not the other members of the executive board. And Assistant Chief Unfred responded basically, no, I'm going to continue communicating with everyone on the executive board. As I have in the past. So that's the third claim. And the fourth claim has to do with one of the, the. Police officers was promoted to detective after a civil service process. And Jeremy Valley was considering grieving that promotion and attempting to take it away. He ultimately decided not to file a grievance and after he let the deadline for the grievance pass. Assistant Chief Unfred told the officer now, who's now detective, that the deadline had passed and his promotion was now safe. So these are the four issues that were dealt with in this unfair labor practice complaint. We went to hearing in mid-two thousand twenty one, which is two years after the complaint was filed. And, and there are a couple of reasons for that two year delay. The first one was COVID and the, the union's attorney initially refused to do a Zoom virtual hearing. And, and it was, you know, many months before Perk could convince him to go to hearing in a virtual format. The first time it was, it was scheduled, the union's attorney called in sick on the day before, on the night before. And, and that was accepted and then we had to reschedule for months later. The second time it was scheduled, he called in sick again. And this time I, I very strenuously objected because I had now prepared for the hearing twice. But the hearing examiner granted the continuance and it was basically delayed. The hearing, the start of the hearing was delayed until April of two thousand twenty one. We then actually took four days for the hearing, two days in April and two days in June. In order to complete the hearing and, and then just recently, we got. Uh, in order to complete the hearing. And, and then just recently, we got the ruling from Perk. And what the ruling was, was on, on claims one and two, and these are the claims where Chief Zarro. Actually asked the union executive board if they supported the hearing, uh, Perk ruled in the city's favor. And said that there was no unfair labor practice for Chief Zarro to basically get clarification on whether the contract was satisfied. Uh, on claim four. Uh, the city prevailed on that claim as well, and that's the one where Chief Unfred basically told the detective. That his job was safe and, and therefore, you know, he didn't have anything to worry about from a grievance from his union. On claim three, Perk actually ruled in the union's favor. And, and basically, the, the perk rule is either side, the union or management. Can designate who their chosen representatives are to deal with the other side. And, and Perk is very, is very protective of that, right? So for example, if the city said. That, you know, if you have labor management issues, you need to deal with John Unfred, and he's your point of contact. If the union does not honor that, that's an unfair labor practice. Here, when Jeremy Valley said. You know, deal only with me, do not email the other union executive board members. And, and John Unfred said, no, I'm going to continue my practice of emailing everyone. Uh, Perk said that, that, you know, he was basically refusing to bargain with the union's designated representative. So that is basically why they won on that claim. Uh, there was another case that came out a couple of months before. Where they had a similar ruling and which made me a bit nervous about how this, this particular claim was going to come out. So in practical terms, in practical terms, what does the, this loss on claim three mean? And the answer is, is nothing. Actually, it doesn't really mean anything, because the union has changed presidents. Uh, Jeremy Valley is no longer president, Andy Suver is president. And with Andy Suver as president, there are no communication issues between the city and the police union. So, you know, Andy Suver is not insisting that, that management deal only with him, you know. They can, they can continue to communicate with the entire executive board, and ever since Jeremy Valley has stepped down as president. Everything is fine. So this ruling actually does not change anything in the current relationship between the city and the police union. Uh, could we, the city, have appealed this claim that was lost? And, and an appeal actually goes up to the perk commission. Uh, and they decide whether, you know, the law and the facts were decided correctly. The answer is, is yes, the city could, could appeal. But the city decided, given the very, very, very low stakes of the loss, that it basically wasn't worth. The time and even more importantly, the money to file an appeal. So the basic, basically, since, since this doesn't really change anything, um. That the city decided that it would just rather basically wrap things up and move forward with current union leadership. Uh, in a cooperative way and, and put this to bed. So, given the loss on this claim, what does the city have to do? The city has to do two things. The first is. Uh, post a notice in the break room of the police department for sixty days. And the second is read this at a city council meeting. And I'm gonna read this now. Uh, the Washington State Public Employment Relations Commission, Perk. Conducted a legal proceeding, issued a ruling that the city of Lakewood committed an unfair labor practice. And ordered that this notice be posted to employees. Uh, we unlawfully refuse to bargain with the designated representatives. Of the Lakewood Police Independent Guild. To remedy our unfair labor practice, we will, upon request, negotiate in good faith with the Lakewood Police Independent Guild. And its designated representatives. We will not in any other manner interfere with restraining or coerce employees. In the exercise of their collective bargaining rights under the laws of the state of Washington. And now I have read what is required to be read. Uh, and, and then this, this actually. Uh, the city will then, when the minutes are drawn up for this meeting, they'll attach that notice to the minutes. And send it to Perk, and then the matter will be done. So does anyone uh, on the council have any questions for me about the perk proceeding or the result or anything else related?
I do.
Mr. Weyland?
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the update. So there's no monetary penalty or sanction, financial sanction or otherwise to the city as a result of. The loss, quote unquote, on item number three?
No, there's not.
Okay. And then with regard to uh, that particular item and the comment that. The relationship is different with Mr. Valley gone, now that we have Mr. Seaver, Andy Seaver in place. Has that been reduced to writing that he can be communicated with or he can communicate with? Uh, Mr. Unfred or Mr. Unfred can communicate to the executive board so that there's no lack of clarity with regard to that?
Uh, I don't know, but Mr., uh, the President Suver has been the president for quite a while, and, and I. And I, I don't believe that there have been any issues about that, but uh, Heidi was right, she raised her hand, so she may know the answer to that.
Yes, um, my understanding from the chief upon getting this decision was that we are going to belt and suspenders. And if it hasn't already been put in writing, that's certainly the intent of both the chief and the assistant chief. I would um, underscore what Mr. Bolacina has shared with you. The dynamics uh, with the guild have changed to the point where the relationship is dramatically different, but we definitely appreciate. That extra step of getting something clear, clear in writing.
I think that would be prudent. As, I think that would be prudent. Thank you. Any other questions? Very good. If not, well, thank you very much for coming tonight, and it's great to see another fellow member of the bar association, so thanks for coming.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
Very good. So, Mr. Caulfield, uh, the floor is back to you, and I had one alibi on my council comments I wanted to bring up. I was at the Clover Park School District Board meeting tonight. It was their first meeting with the swearing in of uh, the new members. Um, Al, Alyssa Anderson Pearson was sworn in for reelection, and David Anderson was sworn in for his election. And they said in bitter due to Marty Schaefer, my, my question to the group is whether it's appropriate to send a congratulatory letter. To the new members of the board and a thank you letter to those departing. Seems like a nice thing to do from one. Uh, agency to another, just to welcome them, create a, a good relationship from day one. People have any thought about that? Just a welcome, congratulations, that kind of a deal?
Would be a good. Step toward building a better, a closer relationship with the new members.
I was supposed, well, Patty was online to speak tonight, but I, in your absence, Patty, I was gonna go ahead and speak, but they didn't have their Zoom thing configured very well. And couldn't see me in the room, so. I was there in spirit.
Thank you.
Any vigorous opposition to that? I, I mean, I don't, I'm not wedded to the thought, but I just thought it's kind of a nice thing to do.
I, I, I don't know that we have need to send. Three letters, uh.
Oh, I was saying just one.
To the board. Well, you know, if we were going to do congratulations, I would. Send a letter to each individual or thanking to do that. Um, I think if we want to send a letter to uh, Dr. Schaefer, who. Spent more than a decade on the board, um, that we uh, we might do that, and I think that whichever. One of us is the representative at the. Who, who, at the next meeting where they, where they actually have the technology or their in-person capability to do that, can communicate. On behalf of the city, the congratulations to the.
Sure.
Uh, reelected and newly elected uh, uh, members and to the, the new board as. Constituted as we're going to have a new council essentially, even though it's the same face as constituted here in January.
Okay, very good. So maybe we're just in lieu of a letter, we'll just do a, the next person who goes out there says congratulations at the next January meeting. That works. Very good. All right, Mr. Caulfield, if that's it, we will now move into a closed session. After we adjourn the council study session, and I don't have the script here, but it's going to be to review something, Ms. Walker.
Um, yes, actually, the session going into now allows you to adjourn your meeting. The meeting going into is a closed session that is an exception from the Open Public Meetings Act, and it's for the purposes of. Discussing strategy for purposes of collective bargaining.
Very good. So we will go ahead and I'll adjourn our city council study session. We all hopefully should have the. The closed session link, and if that's the case, I'll bid you adieu for a few minutes. Is there a need to have a comfort break for five minutes? Or you guys wanna go directly into the meeting? Go directly into the meeting, I'm seeing. Okay, very good. Well, I will adjourn the meeting and we'll see you in.